Good evening. Thank you for joining us for the School District of the City of Dearborn Regular Meeting on Monday, March 13. It is 7:02. I will call the meeting to order.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Dambrojo?
Here.
Trustee McDonald?
Here.
Trustee Moses?
Here.
Trustee Pachikoff?
Here.
Trustee Watts? Here.
President Thorpe? Here. Next item.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Ahazri from Becker Principal will introduce students who will lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done.
Good job.
We will have our students come up to receive some plaques. Farah. Congratulations and thank you. Kareem. Thank you very much. Hiba. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
My name is Kareema Badi and I'm an Iris Becker Elementary student in third grade. This is a great gift for me because it's my birthday tomorrow and this is the greatest gift I could ever get.
I thought you were going to say the greatest gift you could ever get was us singing Happy Birthday to you, but that would not be a gift.
Happy Birthday.
Yes.
My name is Hiba Al-Sahidi and I'm a fourth grade student at Becker Elementary.
Hi, my name is Zafar Abbas and I'm a student from Becker Elementary and I'm in fifth grade.
Great job.
Thank you for being here. Before we go along with the agenda, I wanted to make one brief comment. A month ago, we met here together for our normal board meeting. What we didn't know as we were closing the meeting is that there had been a mass shooting in Michigan State, but we found more information about that night and as the weeks progressed. In the time since that happened, this board took action and put forward a resolution that was read at the College Board meeting the following week, in which we called for legislators to do everything they can to improve safety by putting forward straightforward gun control initiatives and supporting mental health. So we want to make sure our children are safe whenever they are in our care. Going on with the agenda then?
Superintendent's update. Agenda items retirement.
All right, so we're going to start with our recognition on the agenda for retirements. We want to both congratulate our retirees and thank them for their many years of service. We have Carol Ball with over 24 years of service, Cheryl Balnick with 43 years of service, Mark Safaldi, 25 years of service, Monica Hankins, over 25 years of service, Rhonda Hassan, 26 years of service, Kerry Kerr, over 28 years of service, Evelyn Lukasik, over 20 years of service, Lina Mukaled, 22 years of service, and Scott Tobias, over 24 years of service. Anybody's here, and I know we have one teacher here who I got hired at the same time, we could ask you to stand and we'll recognize you now. Retired. Congratulations to all our retirees.
The soon to be retired Ms. Rhonda Hassan.
All right, I'm just going to move. We'll move along and we are expecting Congresswoman Dingle to arrive, so we'll come back to that. I'm going to start with Ms. Kotamov from our Translation Department, and she's going to come up and provide some information on our adult translation services. And we are looking to order, she's going to talk about some equipment that we're ordering and other things to enhance what we do. We already are leaders within the, what we do in the state as far as in the buildings with the students and parents. So she does a great job and I'll turn it over to her.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for giving me the chance to give, it's going to be a very brief presentation because if you want a long one, it will take hours. I will start with saying that we have 48 languages in our district and these are the languages required by parents. So our parents need 48 languages. We have an in-house, five languages that we serve in-house. We have Spanish, Arabic, Urdu, Chinese, and French. Staff members who are qualified to provide these translation and interpretation. Unfortunately, the Spanish, we lost our interpreter for a medical leave and we are trying to replace that person. We out-resourced 43 languages as needed whenever we get a request from a school or a staff member. We provide written, verbal, online, in-person, and over-the-phone interpretation as well. We provide for all schools, like I said, and community partners. So if we are needed to do something and translate something for Wayne Risa, for any other school district, or we have already translated, we do that for Wayne State. We also help with that translation if it's needed. We reserve all the requests that start from any department in this building, plus special education to all the schools, K through 12 and preschool as well. All requested languages, as I said, any languages, even if we have one parent with this language, we serve them. We put most of the time a disclaimer at the bottom of the document if no one asks for translation to make sure that it is available and parents are aware of it, and our disclaimer is in six different languages. We also have a hotline, inside, in-house hotline, which we provide also the five languages for anyone to interpret for the parents. And we serve all the requests and the district-wide documents. So any documents come from any place, any school, and anything come from the main office here from our building, we make sure that we translate that and post it at least in Arabic. We do have consecutive interpreting, so the interpreting is in three modes, actually four modes. We do consecutive, we do simultaneously, and we order actually a while ago microphones and headphones and equipments for simultaneous interpreting. We are waiting for them to arrive. These equipments will serve the audience in person here if they are attending board meetings or if we have a parents' meeting. The equipments can be adjusted to more than one language, so if we need, like for example, we have parents' meeting with the Yale Department, and during that meeting, we have parents who speaks Arabic, Urdu, and Spanish, and we serve them in three languages. So we have three different interpreters who help the parents understand everything going in the meeting. We also have whisper interpreting, that if we have a meeting like this and maybe one parent's need interpretation, we can sit with that parent on the side, make sure that we whisper so we don't interrupt the meeting. We have site translation, so during the meeting, if there's any document, anyone wants it to be translated, it wasn't mentioned before, we can take a look at it and interpret immediately. These are the links that we have. So this link is basically for our staff member to request translation and interpreting services. I basically receive average of five translation documents a day and sometimes 67 interpreting requests also a day. We also have our OCR logs that we are required to prove for OCR services. So every school has their own link. They go in and they upload these OCR logs, which basically prove that we are providing the parents with the language since they come into the school. And OCR also can, they have a copy of this link so they can see it. We have translation service website. That's where we have the announcement, most likely it's Dr. Maleko's blog. Everything goes on his blog, it goes on this website also in Arabic. And as I said, we are looking into having these information in other languages. I think, and now we have an offer from this company. They do provide an online services. This is an emergency services, it's 24 hours, there is no contract, there is no obligation. We have an account with them. If we create an account, it will be available with code for all schools in case they need something and I am not available or any of our bilingual staff available, or maybe we need someone with more experience because not everything our bilingual staff can interpret, we can go ahead and use that number. They will charge us only on what we're going to use. We still studying this option, and if we're going to go forward, of course, we can let you know. And if you have any questions.
Trustee Watts?
So a quick question. When it comes to IEPs for students, I know some parents whose English is a second language who, an IEP is very difficult to understand to begin with.
Yep.
If they don't request it in their language, but later on would like to have it, is that something they can do and/or, there are other parents that I know who think that they understand it, but then later on they would like a translation. So I guess what would be the best steps for that?
Well, we do translate the IEP if they are requesting them. So during the IEP, we do have interpreting services, and these services are only done by the qualified staff member, which is me and my other two amazing student service liaison, Mr. Sabra and Ms. Widdad. Because as you know, IEP is a legal document and we need to make sure that every word is understood correctly. So we do provide interpreting, and when the parents ask for it, we also provide translation. But we explain to the parents that translation of an IEP, a MET report, take a long time because it's very sensitive, it needs a professional. So sometimes we do also subcontract these if we are overwhelmed, we cannot finish them on a regular time and the parents really need them, so we collaborate with our resources. And if they do not understand for any reason during the meeting, they have the right to request another meeting and an interpreter, certified interpreter will be there, which most of the time me because I am a certified interpreter.
And I guess the other thing is, for my parents who English is a second language, sometimes they would be too, they would think they would understand it, but once they get into the meeting, they would be hesitant to say that they need the help.
So as an interpreter and as a district liaison, I cannot interfere with that. But because I have multiple hats, I will understand that, I will make sure, are you understanding? Is it clear? Would you ask, would you want us to ask for an example? And I also asked the staff member, can you give us a simple example? Can you use a simple language? Again, as an interpreter, my code of ethics prevent me from doing that. But because I am an in-house interpreter and I understand, I have been working with our parents for a long time, so I give myself this space to make sure that they do understand. And then they do have my phone number, and if they want to contact me for something, sometimes I can answer their question and most of the time I will tell them, okay, I'm going to go maybe to Mr. Rosalee, to Dr. Bazey. We will see who can answer your question and get back with you.
Perfect, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So move along. So next, I'm going to ask Congresswoman Dingle to come up to the podium here, and I'm going to make a few comments from the mic, and if we can give her a big round of applause for her great support over many, many years. I was with Congresswoman Tlaib this afternoon, and she wanted to be here, but she has the town hall and she sent her regards. And of course, we're developing a relationship with her, and thank you for that as well. And we had a very good meeting today. So Congresswoman Dingle, I really just, on behalf of the School District and the board, want to extend my appreciation to you and your family and John and everyone for many decades of service in Dearborn, to the community, to our students, to everyone really, within the city and around. I appreciate your supports, your support for our students. I know every March, right now we're in March's Reading Month, that's part of my commentary too, and you go and you read to the students, and I've seen you do that and I appreciate it. You're also willing to come to any student events that you were invited to, you know, whether that be Rotary Youth Month, or my Superintendent's Advisory Council, or local school invitations from the principals, you're always there. Whenever you're in town, you're there, and I know that, and you really care about our students. You also took a lot of time, for me personally, we had those network legislator meetings, and in fact, during COVID, we were in the meetings with the Governor's Office and we were online every week, and you were always advocating for us here in Dearborn and around and within your districts to make sure that everyone was safe as we dealt with that pandemic. Last year, I can say specifically, I remember, it was in January, and some of you might remember the Omicron variant was hitting, and there were regulations on what students could stay in the district, and we had a shortage of test kits across the nation. And I was at my superintendent conference and I contacted you, and within like a day, all of a sudden, because we may have had to shut down the district in that month, to be honest, because we did not have enough test kits. And some of my superintendent colleagues at the conference were saying, Congresswoman Dingle is getting you enough kits to get the students to make sure we could stay safe and keep them in school. So there's just another example of you really supporting us. I also have enjoyed my visits with you in Washington. My first year when I came superintendent, I was there with the former mayor and former chief Haddad, and we were presenting at the FBI building. You welcomed us all. My children were actually there, my family during that visit, and my daughter loves meeting with you. We've also been to Washington several times to see you with our five blue ribbon schools, and you're always hospitable to our teachers and our principals who really said that that was one of the highlights of their visit, even though we were getting the award, the visit to your office was part of their highlight. And I know the last one, President Cavalluna, was there with us when we met. I've seen you at many, many events, Memorial Day Parade, you know, that picture with the sign that you're always eager to take with me because a lot of people resist, and you're always eager. And recently, we were just meeting in our committee on $7.1 million of EPA grant funding that I know you helped secure for electric buses in the district. So you know, Congresswoman Dingle, we have something we want to give you to show our appreciation for you and your hard work, and I know that you believe also in our vision, students first, inspire, educate, celebrate, because that's what you've done, and you've been a stakeholder in this community, supporting everyone. You've supported me, our administration, our teachers, our everyone in the district, and it's just been an honor and a pleasure. And I know you'll still be around, and I know you team up with Congresswoman Tlaib, and I look forward to future endeavors, and I just want to thank you. So on this plaque, and I'm going to come over, the Dearborn Board of Education extends its sincere appreciation and gratitude for your many years of unwavering support and commitment to public education and the staff, students, and parents in the Dearborn Public Schools, March 13, 2023. And I salute you right now.
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
I want to say that all of you are my friends, and I miss Dearborn. I love my district and I love everybody, but Dearborn was my home forever. You all care. You may have interesting discussions sometimes, but you care about our young people. John Dingle used to say they're 25% of our population and 100% of our future, and I thank you for your public service. I miss seeing you all like as regularly as I did, but I'm still around alive. And I think the most wonderful reassuring thing for me is the young people I've gotten to know because of all of you, but Glenn, the kids that I met when they were freshmen and have graduated, and I don't like to think that we're old, we're not, we're seasoned, but I'm now seeing them in their jobs and their success, and it's because of the work of all of you. So I thank you for what you all do. You have been wonderful friends. I miss you, but nobody can take that feeling of love from your heart or friendship away from you, and I'll always be here for Dearborn and all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. And of course... If we want to get a photo with any of the trustees joining in with Congresswoman Dingle, be our guest.
Hey, let's get everybody.
Next, I just want to move along on my commentary here, and I want to recognize Mr. Tom Wall for the Businessperson of the Year Award from MSBO. Congratulations, well deserved, and I do plan to attend when you receive the award at the MSBO conference. If we can give him a State of Michigan. And I think it was two for your lifetime achievement is what my understanding is, correct? Great. I also want to just mention about inclement weather, our support staff, our operations. I did a one-minute message thanking our operations during snow days. There is a lot that goes into it, and we know that we have more information now. So every time we have a potential closure, you know, we're getting more updated forecasts than we were years ago that were more accurate. And so I always meet with a meteorologist, which is provided through the Wayne County Superintendent Association, and then we have multiple meetings with our team, there's multiple communications, and then there's decisions to be made. But we know the operations department, when we are, we're opening after a closure or we're staying open, they're working very hard to clear the snow, make sure there's no ice, and they work very hard. Mark Andrews, the Building Operations Team as well. And then we know our transportation team that also does a great job, you know, working hard to ensure that, you know, our students get to school safe when we're open. And I know Mr. Sortrez is here, and I want to recognize him. And with that, with the great work they do, and we have had to close over the last, we have five days, we're allowed, it's up to six by state law, so we are in pretty good shape, but obviously, safety is number one. But if we can stay open, we want to stay open because we understand that students need to be in school. So I'm going to ask Mr. Sortrez and Mr. Andrews to come up with Mr. Wall, and we talked about the grant that we received, and this is something we're going to give to you to hang in the transportation, and it's appreciation to you and your department, all your bus drivers that I saw today driving around the district, making sure. So this was the article that came, it was very positive, and so we wanted to...
That's why we needed you here. So we appreciate you. It wasn't for any negative tip.
Appreciate that very much.
I'd just like to thank all of you, the board members, President Thorpe, Dr. Maleko. Transportation is a very challenging business. We have a great team. You know, our office, Ms. Lee, my assistant, every day, you know, we've got buses rolling from 6:15 in the morning till sometimes 11 o'clock at night, six days a week sometimes, and we're here for the children. Children we put first, safeties first, and we continue to make progress in hiring and bringing more people to our team. Thank you guys very much.
So we're very excited that we, and that's what we were doing before in the committee meetings, you know, the Wayne Gretzky quote that you love is to skate to where the puck is going, not to where it's been, and that's what we're doing with this bus movement and the grants that we're receiving with the electric bus. I also want to mention, it was National School Breakfast Week, March 6th to 10th. Want to thank all of our staff and glad that all of our students can come and get nutritious meals in the schools. You might recall, during the pandemic, we were serving over 100,000 a week, and so obviously it's very important with National Breakfast Week. Also wanted to mention, it did come up at a board meeting, just our compliance officers so that it's publicized, and I believe Mr. Mustland will come up, but we do have that on the website, and they're all listed off of the homepage, and I believe it's always been on the homepage, and then I think you link it to the policy, so that way, if anyone's looking, David's going to show you. And I know there's a lot of information on our website, so it does list all the compliance officers that are trained, and we have kind of taken the lead on that with Title IX and others. In fact, we've got, we had our attorneys come in, not only to train our entire administrative group, but we trained our executive cabinet on being compliance officers. So I think that's very important, along with the fact that all the staff are required to take one of those annual video trainings for that. And I believe that they were just sending reminders out to remind staff to make sure that they go through that training. Thank you, David. I also want to mention, it was International Women's Day on March 8, and just wanted to recognize the contributions of women to society in general, and we have several on the board and in the audience, and so I just wanted to congratulate the women that are here. If we can give them a... I know the college usually does a big celebration as well. I have a couple more here. We have Mr. Jeff Del Judisch that was named the Athletic Director of the Year for the State of Michigan, so he is retiring this year, and we congratulate him on that award. Also want to just mention, I was at the art show, and I usually do a selection, my children helped me select the art exhibit that will hang in my office, and Sophia Ganem from DHS was a student that I selected, and I don't know the names when I do because they have it all covered, so you don't know who they are or what school until you go to the event, and so I was able to talk to her and all the students, and you can see the gifted students if you go. I'd recommend going, it's open, and you can go on the second level too as well, but there's a lot of gifted students, and you see the selection right there. And I just want to mention too, the arts, you know, I've been at the Honors Choir, and then today I was at a Fortson Feeder with Mr. Taylor, and we have this music committee promoting, and it was great. The Fortson Auditorium was packed as all the students from the middle schools came in to hear the concert with the high school students. So there's a lot of gifted students, and the teachers are doing some great work in the district. And we do have some additional meetings coming up to try to continue to promote the arts. I already mentioned about March's Reading Month, but I know a lot of trustees are reading, I'm reading, I'm booked solid, and basically, I don't have a lot in my schedule this month, but it's great and I enjoy it. And so anyone that wants to, I am booking into April now because of the timing, but I know a lot of you go, and we appreciate everyone who's reading in schools. And we have a study session coming up, but this is the last official P-12 meeting this month, so I know that Ramadan will be coming up at the end of the month, and I just want to wish the community a blessed Ramadan and a safe season. And that is everything for my commentary.
Trustee Barry.
Got a question, Dr. Maleko, I don't know if it's for you or from Mr. Mustland, in regard to compliance officers, how are they picked? Because for the longest time, these names, I mean, some of these names have been on here for a long time. How are they?
A lot of times, it's the positions they hold because of the different areas that they work with, whether it be human resources, student services, and then special ed would be another, you know, area that we would want to have staff available.
What do we tell that employee or that parent? It's mostly the employee, that if they have a complaint and they go on this page and they find these names and they recognize some of the names and probably part of their complaint has something to do with the names recognized? Is there like another alternate? Do they reach out to you?
They could reach out to me, yes.
They can always reach out to you and say, by the way, I got a problem with Usain Barry, and I need to talk to somebody, what do I do?
Sure.
Yeah. Reason I asked about this at the last meeting is because there was an employee that reached out to me, and not to get into the weeds like we say, I said, it's probably a good idea to reach out to a compliance officer, and about a half hour later, an employee called me and just pretty much laughed at me because I guess three of the names was part of her complaint, and that night, we had a last meeting when I brought that up, and I was hoping for some answers that night, thank you for the answers tonight, and that employee is no longer with us anymore for her or his reasons. So just FYI, you have a complaint... So, so just FYI, you have a complaint, you go on here, you see Hussein Barry on here as a compliance officer, and you have a problem and you figure this is a team, and always reach out to Dr. Maleko.
And all of our executive cabinet is trained as compliance officers too, the entire.
So what is that process? So let's say, because you probably can get involved, so do you just direct them to another trained individual?
It depends on what the situation may be, I can't comment, I don't, I would have to see what it is.
Obviously, I'm asking you to put it out there because people, these are, these are questions.
Depending, there could be people working with, it depends on the, you know, whatever it may be. But obviously, we want to make sure that we're, you know, always acting appropriately, and that's why we have multiple compliance officers trained.
Sure, good thing.
Some of it is required by law and others, we just want to do the right thing always.
Okay, and I got one more thing, President Thor, if you don't mind.
Is it on compliance officers?
No.
Okay, then I've got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine. The number of compliance officers we've got for the size of our district, is it appropriate, does it align with what other districts might have?
I would have to really look at with other districts, but I don't know, Mason, if you would know, I mean, I think everything goes through our attorneys too, so we're in.
I can survey other districts.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we'd have to.
I was just curious. All right, trustee Barry.
Yes. March is Reading Month, and thank you to all of our guest readers, not just the board and staff. So I know there's other professionals coming in and reading, so I'm very thankful. But looking, looking on the website, following this Senate Bill 12 that just started, that just they hit, right, right in January they started. So we always hear the term that we want to keep money and politics out of the classroom, keep politics out of the classroom, but that's, when people get to Lansing and people get to Washington, that's no longer the case. So this, this read by the third grade, it's going to get reversed, but holding back students is not going to take immediate effect. Because that part was defeated just a few days ago. This bill will go to the governor and she already showed signs that she wouldn't hesitate to sign it. So with, with that part being defeated, Dr. Maleko, are we still applying for waivers to not to hold the students back, the third graders are still behind?
So the waivers would be something that the staff members would, would work with, and it was something that wasn't in the initial bill, but it would be something that we would still have to, you know, follow the law. You know, there's a lot of good things in it as far as, obviously, we want intervention coaches and other resources. But we know the retention piece is where a lot of the educators in the state, that was the questionable piece that was in the law because a lot of the research doesn't support it. However, some, in some cases, there could be unique situations, so our preference is really to work with parents more, to give parents the decision on that versus, you know, forcing them to do certain things, which is kind of how the law originated, the original law. And then they added the waiver provisions, and you might recall that we had a task force too that we really looked at this law with then, who retired Dr. Trokel, that we did a several months study to look into things that we could do. And we were getting a lot of complaints at that time about the retention piece, but if the retention moves, all the other good things is my understanding, and I haven't looked at the most recent version. But that, you know, we still believe in, obviously, we need to provide support for students to make sure they accelerate, and reading is critical at the third grade level and any level, but especially at the elementary level.
Okay, and just to follow up, I don't want to be the bearer of bad news, but this article right here, and there's a few other articles similar, that it's out there that Michigan, state of Michigan, fell from 32nd in 2019 to 43rd in fourth grade reading scores under 2022 National Assessment for Educational Progress. So that puts Michigan in the bottom 10%. And at the last meeting, I spoke about some of the assessment scores that are, you know, at elementary level, especially the third grade. I'm still waiting for that report. But as Dearborn and Representative Dingle mentioned, Dearborn is a special place, we all feel that Dearborn is a special place. And, but I really truly believe that we don't need to wait for assessment scores and we don't need to wait for laws to change back and forth. Snyder put in, you know, this was a Snyder, Governor Snyder initiative, and it sounds like, you know, the Democrats took over, you know, right or wrong, doesn't matter which side of the debate you're on. We're, you know, we're going to undo everything that was passed under the Snyder administration. But this is something I don't think we should kind of wait for the law to happen, whatever. In 2016, we were asked to figure out a way to get our students caught up on reading. Yours truly here, walked into the fourth grade, Ms. Borg's class at Salina School, not speaking, well, I can't say not speaking one word of English, I learned one word at Canterbury Park, and that was the word okay. And I had a discussion with one of my colleagues earlier and had a good laugh that literally used to put a cassette player with headphone sets on me, pull me out of class, and learned what the word I and we and you and, you know, fifth grade in Ms. Markowski's class, I won a spelling bee. I'm not something like a rare bird or anything, but if our kids are behind on reading, I think we have enough intelligent people to figure out what we need to do on our own. We don't need to wait for, you know, the carrot or, you know, somebody telling us, you know, we're going to penalize you if you don't do this, you don't do that. 2016 was when this was started, we started discussing this, was seven years ago. Our assessment scores, and I have them here and I was ready to put them out there, and I just, I don't, I don't want this to be a negative comment, I want this to be, where did we go from here? Where do we go from here? I'm awaiting that report, that's going to be very telling, since those comments I made asking for that report last week, many, many educators within the district and outside of the district reached out to me, and it's, it's very telling. And this is not information that, you know, I'm going to look for, these are, this is information that my clients are telling me about when they're searching where to live. And obviously, they want to live in Dearborn and we're not giving them good reasons to make a decision Dearborn over other cities. So I would love, like, I, I don't know what it's going to take, you know, principals, administration, everybody get on board and say, what do we need to do? I'm going to go back to Representative Dingle, she quoted her husband John, God bless his soul, and I've heard him say this, that 25% of our population is our younger one, 100% of our future, this is our future. If they can't read at the third grade level, in the fourth grade level, they become labeled, they become labeled in the middle school because they tend to start getting themselves in trouble, start missing schools. They start feeling like, they start believing, not just feeling, they start believing like, there's something wrong with me. And we don't want to talk about what happens to them when they get to the high school. And furthermore, when, you know, get behind these driving machines, these killing machines and get in the streets and all the trouble they get into. Really, 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 most opportunities, if we're that low on a totem pole as a state of Michigan and some of our scores as a district, how do, how do I sleep at night knowing this information? And there's really nothing I can do because I'm depending on the professionals to come up with some answers for me, for us. So I would, you know, obviously, you don't have to comment now, but at one point, I would like to hear your thoughts or somebody's thoughts on this, what do we need to do? You know, this board, do we need to take, you know, resources from someplace else and put them here? We have many, many organizations that are benefiting from Dearborn under the, you know, we're tutoring students or we're helping students and that. So obviously, it's not working. So what do we need to do? I mean, I take this to your team, come back with something solid, you know. We care about our, we care about our babies, we care about our students, and if they're kind of like behind in the third grade and they get further behind once they get to the sixth and seventh grade, then we're not going in the right direction. We're not providing, you know, somebody asked me, why, why, why I'm not asking about the math scores too? Well, the math scores, math scores are around the same area. You know, if you, if third grader can't read, when he gets to advanced math and you got to read problems, we know what happens there. So I am really looking forward, I said, I told my board, this is something I'm going to concentrate on, everybody I've spoken to the last few days. This is, this is the number one thing that I'm going to be concentrating on, and we need to come up with answers. In this district, we've solved some, 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 some very challenging problems. 2020 is just around the corner, but before that, when one of our buildings was labeled a priority school, we rolled up our sleeves and went to work. There was many, many challenges that we faced on us. Dearborn is and will always be a special place, and if we all work together, parents, teachers, thank you to the teachers, whatever you can come up with, Dr. Maleko, a plan moving forward. I don't need to wait for something to happen in Lansing. I think, I think what's happening in Lansing, it's my opinion only, is a clown show right now. It's like, okay, there's a new administration, let's just undo everything that happened, and four, five years from now, other people, the other side will win the elections and they'll start doing all this, it's a joke. Who's paying the price? Who's paying the price? Definitely our students, our future. So I am looking forward to keep this discussion going, Dr. Maleko. That's all I have, President Thorpe.
One thing I would add is, this is the year that we're due to update the strategic plan, correct?
Correct.
So we could make sure that there is an emphasis in the strategic plan, and that does not get to the point immediately. We can start working on it sooner to make sure we've got everything in place. But we could make sure, even though we want to make, the kids need the jobs of tomorrow, not today, but if they can't read, they can't get the jobs anyways. So to continue to work on, on reading and other skills. Thanks. Next item.
Recognition and acknowledgements, commendations.
Hello, my name is Hassan Barry. I'll be reading the first half of these commendations, and then this is.
Zachary Amaker, I'll be reading the second half.
Okay, so in terms of high school, we have commendation to the three Dearborn High students who participated in a Model United Nations event in February and will be attaining, attending the Michigan State Model U.N. this month. All three students represented Spain in their events. Cassian Anderson presenting at the varsity level won best position paper out of 140 entries. Nyla Abdullah and Mohamed Sob both received verbal commendations for their work in their respective novice and junior varsity committees. Commendations to the Dearborn High Student Council, the students organized a charity week and were able to raise $3,000 to donate to access to the Access Recovery Center. In terms of the middle school and elementaries, middle and elementary schools, commendations to Woodworth Middle School's sixth grader, sixth graders Lexi Archer and Sienna Foss on their participation in the Dearborn, in the Detroit Symphony Orchestra Middle School Honors Band. The girls, along with more than 500 other middle school students from 71 schools, spent more than six hours practicing alongside professional DSO musicians. They were then part of an amazing performance in the orchestra hall.
Commendations to all the students who qualified to compete in the district-wide spelling bees on March 1st and 2nd. To make it to the second annual district competitions, students first had to place among top during, place among the top during competitions at their school. Third grade winners include in first place Hala Yakub from McCollie Elementary and second place Evelyn Pinan from Duval Elementary. Fourth grade winners include first place Jad Zahid from Hague Elementary and second place Ahmed Al Darwish from Gear Park Elementary. For fifth grade, first place went to Taisir Abouhamud from Lory Elementary and second place to Hassan Al Mahdi from McCollie Unis. Sixth grade winners include first place for Deena Nasr from Woodworth and second place for Abi Sheik Parasul from Stout. Seventh grade winners included in first place Amira Al Madadi from Bryant and in second place Zaid Al Sayidi from Salina Intermediate. And for eighth grade, first place winner was Ali Darwish from STEM and second place Colin Chamberlain from Bryant. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Well done.
Before you go anywhere, I didn't hear you say what schools you're from.
We're both from Henry Ford Early College from the Advanced Manufacturing School.
Good. Any trustees have questions for Zach and Hassan?
What, what year?
Are you in your 13th year or 12th? Senior year. Great.
Thank you.
Where are you going from here? What's, what's next for both of you?
Hopefully Ann Arbor.
That's the goal, hopefully, somewhere in the architectural field.
Good, good, and is there anyone you'd want to give a shout out to? Any teacher, staff member, club, anybody that without them, you wouldn't be where you are today?
Shout out to Mr. Hussein, the geometry teacher from Henry Ford.
And Ms. Stevens from, again, Henry Ford.
Big shout out to Ms. Stevens.
We'll make sure they get word of it. Thanks again for being here today.
Who's the math teacher, I missed it.
I'm sorry. Oh, Mr. Hussein.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
One that I would add, and I'm assuming we'll get more information about this, yesterday was the Van Patrick Awards, and we had several of our students nominated both for the Mickey Van Patrick Award, which goes for middle school athletes, and then for the Van Patrick Award that goes for high schools, the male athlete of the year is a Dearborn High student, Noah Dobert, so congratulations to him. And I assume we'll get more information on all that. Next item.
Empty bowls.
Mr. Grant? No. Okay.
We'll come back to that.
Okay.
Acknowledgement of donations.
Good evening, everyone. We have three donations tonight. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by Maria Powers to be used for fourth and fifth grade field trips. A donation of $500 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by USAF Construction to be used for PBIS incentives. And a donation of $100 has been offered to Hague Elementary School by Schweitzer Engineering Laboratories to be used for a science field trip to fourth and fifth graders. Thank you to all the donors.
Thank you very much.
Next, staff recognition, business services.
President Thorpe, Superintendent Maleko and board, I am happy today to recognize the business services staff. We have a representative coming up here behind me, make sure they were moving behind me. They're not the most wanting to do public speaking, so I'll do all the speaking today. I fit in that category too, but it's part of my job, so I have to do this. But I just want to recognize the business services staff. We have a very efficient and, you know, great knowledgeable staff that have been in some of these positions for quite some time. And just to kind of give you an idea of the workload that they do every day, you know, we have over a $470 million budget, we have over 2,900 employees, and every one of these people have dealt with part of that on their daily basis. It's like going to work every day and knowing that you're not going to complete your workload for the day, there's always carryover to the next day. So these are the people that work effort, you know, hard work every single day, do the best they can, knowing they never have a complete job when they leave the office. That'll be there tomorrow, and then more stuff will be there tomorrow. So I just really appreciate that they're behind the scenes, they do really hard work, and I can't say enough about how they make me look good, even though, you know, they don't, they just do what they do, and they, they don't really get recognized so much. So that's why we're here today to kind of give them some recognition. This is only a small group of, what, 12, 13 people that run the whole business services aspect, and, you know, the other ones received their certificate earlier today. But these here today have volunteered to come up here and stand in front of the limelight and accept the awards on all of them. So the first one I have is Elaine Sterrett, who is the Director of Accounting. Do I say any words?
No.
That's why we're in accounting is because we deal with the numbers and not so much with the speaking.
Business Services Specialist Martha Quay. She's one of our newest members, and she actually does both business services in the payroll department and benefits and also the accounting side, so she does both. Next one is Pam Miller, the Director of Payroll and Benefits.
I just want to say I'm very, very proud of the payroll team. Marcia Sand and Wendy Coza couldn't be with us tonight, and then Marthea and Carrie, we work really hard. Everybody thinks, oh, it's not a payroll week, what are you guys doing? You're just sitting around doing nothing. We're busy all the time, we're a good team, we support one another, and I'm really proud of them.
And the last one is Carrie Bronshaw, who's the Payroll Specialist in Payroll. And a special kudos to the payroll department, they're implementing our online time card system this year. It's been a long time coming, and you wouldn't believe the hard work that goes behind the scenes on that one, so. goes behind the scenes on that one. So I want to thank all of our team, and thank you for the time today.